Public hearing. All persons are reminded that this session is being recorded on tape for the preservation of records and that you're asked when called upon to give your interest in name and address and interest in the matter before the council. That matter is the discussion of ordinance 533, which is an ordinance regarding small cell sites. I don't see it as a topic burner, but there are several things we have to do, I guess, logistically and editorializing wise up here. So, and it's the side of the table that wants to do that.
I'll start, just explaining what it is. Ordinance 533 is an ordinance regarding small cell towers. Federal government has come out and let all the wireless carriers basically say, these small cells, which are going to be 5G technology, they've said to the wireless carriers, basically, you can put them anywhere, except in cases of municipalities like us. State can have their own requirements over top of that, but then municipalities, we need to have our own local rules and regulations about where they can put them, what size they can be, and stuff like that, just to make sure that they're not popping up everywhere and we can control where they go to a point. So, the ordinance was drafted, it went to town council last month, then it came to planning and zoning. Council made some changes, Councilman Thomas made some changes, planning and zoning made some changes to the draft. So, the revised draft of the ordinance is here tonight. What we're gonna do is we'll go over it and go over the changes that are in it now, and then probably remand it back to planning and zoning one more time, just to make sure that it is what we're looking for. Chances are that this could be a quote "living document," I think, simply because the technology of these small cells and 5G is so new, the game will change as it goes down the line, and we'll need to change the ordinance to keep up with it. So, in a nutshell, what the ordinance is. You got anything to add, Wayne?
No, I think you've covered everything.
Everybody got Michelle's email to Tammy?
Okay.
On permitted versus preferred?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else up here?
Well, I'll discuss the permitted versus preferred. You want me to do it now, or?
Sure. We've got time. We've got four minutes.
Originally, in the original draft, it was written as, the locations where they could put them were most preferred or least preferred, and it was broken down by zoning districts. Councilman Thomas didn't think that was strong enough, and I sort of agree with him, didn't have enough bite, so we changed it to the following areas would be permitted, or the following areas would be a conditional use, which would need the approval of the town for anyone to put a small cell in that zoning district. It then went back to Michelle, our town attorney, and she gave a reasoning to keep it as most preferred and least preferred. Like I said, this is new technology. One of her reasoning is, it is new and there's no real law governing what goes in these ordinances. I personally think it should stay as permitted and conditional. And I went on today and I found some actual ordinances dealing exactly like this, that do do it as permitted and as conditional uses.
Well, I do have a question for that. So, what would the conditions be? If it's conditional, what would it could? Because typically, our conditions are, you know, what zoning it's in, and the FCC has made it clear, we can't say no.
I understand.
So, we can't say the conditions has to be in a certain zoning area, it's not allowed in other zoning areas. So, I actually like the language of most preferred and least preferred, because I felt like that was a stronger argument of, I don't know the argument, but it gave us more leeway for discussion of, okay, this is our least preferred place or area we want it to be, and then if that's where you want to go, they have to come before planning and zoning and present the case of why it can't go anywhere else except where they want to put it, in one of our least preferred areas.
It wasn't clear to me that least preferred has the teeth that you just mentioned to force it back to planning zoning or planning zoning choice. As I mentioned at the planning zoning meeting, if we're gonna do conditional, we do have to come up with the conditions upon which we would allow it in the least preferred area. So, we'd have to enumerate those, pure and simple. So, it's something we'd have to, we'd have to do.
And I think we could.
What are those conditions gonna be?
How can we do that when we're not allowed to really say it can't go somewhere? Like, how do you do a condition when basically the FCC's telling us we're not allowed to say it can't go in certain areas?
So, for example, you could say it can go a half block off Main Street, as long as it's a single panel antenna that's less than six square feet. That's a condition.
Or you could say on Main Street, I mean, I don't know if this would fly or not, but in the Main Street revitalization area, like this, I found this in South Carolina, this is a ordinance that they made down there, a generic one that the municipal league put together for all of South Carolina, where if you're going into a certain zoning district down there, you have to meet review, aesthetic review for that zone. You know how we try and push things on Main Street, you know, to go with things that fit nicely with it? We may be able to do something like that, but I-
Create aesthetics to say this is what it, exactly what it needs to look like, or?
Not exactly what it needs to look like, and once again, we had this word, I think, in the original one, and it went away, the word stealth.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be good, when you're referring to something like Main Street.
Something that blends in, but likes it.
Well, I have an opinion on conditions right here, because this one right here, this one right here, I think ADA would have something to say to that.
Right.
If it was put on a corner or somewhere near a ramp, and I think that that would be one of your conditions that you could put up right there. That's definite condition.
Well, I understand that the FCC-
And that's an easy one.
You can't, you can't deny what the FCC has regulated, but I think you can put restrictions on it for the town.
Correct.
Yeah.
And in this generic template from South Carolina, there are places where they refer back to, you know, we go on to the local zoning authority under 47 U.S.C. Section 3032, so they refer back to the federal law and saying, this is how we're fitting this in there.
So, yeah, if we say conditional, we're gonna have to add the conditions.
Right. So, does this go back to the more detailed version of the ordinance that we were originally considering?
No, one of the things I didn't really care for in that ordinance is, it required too many meetings, it was cumbersome, and Tawny Town wrote it, because they have an engineer on staff, we don't have an engineer on staff. That was one of the reasons that we decided to back off and make it more simplified.
And basically, all this refers to about that much of a eight-page document?
Mm-hmm.
It's just about where they can go? Okay. So, who's wordsmithing this and getting the draft?
So, I think what we're gonna propose is that we, when this comes up later on for adoption, that we amend the ordinance to match the draft, send it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, let them do a discussion on conditional and permitted versus least preferred, most preferred, and talk about conditions. I think Mr. Rourke is prepared to discuss that with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And then you'll work with Tammy to get the-
I'll work with Tammy. Lorraine, Councilman Thomas, if necessary, is employed.
All right, we gotta wait forward. Good. All right. Public comments on small cell? I know it's just exhilarating details. All right, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll go to the regular meeting of the mayor and town council, calling it to order. Please rise for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Since tomorrow's the anniversary of 9/11, I just think it's appropriate that we take a moment of silence to remember all those who lost their lives in that tragic event. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tammy, roll.
Mayor Nevin?
Here.
Councilwoman Duff?
Here.
Councilman Renahan?
Here.
Councilman Rourke?
Here.
Councilman Thomas?
Here.
Councilman Ungliffy?
Here.
Minute approvals from August 13th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? When you're ready, Tammy, staff report and Main Street report.
Town staff attended the 25th monthly partnering meeting on August 15th, 2019, for our downtown revitalization project. In addition to our monthly meetings, town staff meets with State Highway's project manager and CJ Miller superintendent every Monday morning to discuss the Main Street project schedule and updates. Red Line 4, number 4, which is the removal of the evergreens in front of 807 South Main Street, and installing a bypass lane across from GNP on the southbound lane, has been approved by State Highway. CJ Miller prepared a price proposal and returned it to State Highway for approval. The previous sidewalks have been poured in Sections 1 and 2, which is from Northwoods Trail to 482, except in the area of Red Line 4, because those sidewalks will be adjusted. Crews should finish all the sidewalks on a northbound lane up to the fire department this week. They plan to finish everything on a northbound lane of the project up to this point by the end of the month, except for the entrance to their gravel construction lot between Eliana Plaza's 1 and 2, and the removal of the trees that are part of Red Line number 4. After the sidewalk crews finished by the fire department, they will move to the southbound lane to begin demolishing the old sidewalks and then installing curb and gutter. The landscaping crew will be in town this month to plant landscaping in Sections 1 and 2, which includes grass also. You may also see crews in different areas of town for smaller tasks that need to be completed, like finishing the driveway apron at Steam and Mag Crabs. The stormwater portion of the project should be completed by the end of September, except for a few inlets, and then that crew can be removed from the Main Street project, or the, from Main Street. CJ Miller plans to continue the permanent patching up to 482 when a paving crew becomes available. They will also even out the patches north of 482. Town staff met with BG&E to discuss the lighting plan for our Main Street revitalization project. The lighting plan that was approved by mayor and council in 2013 included the installation of both lamp posts and Cobra headlights. The lamp post contained LED lighting, but in that plan, the Cobra headlights were not approved as such. So, BG&E will evaluate if we need as many Cobra headlights, if the existing and new ones are installed, as LED lighting, because LED lighting's brighter. Our finance department, our financial auditors were at town hall last week to complete their data collection for our FY 19 financial audit, and will be returning this week, the, or did return this week, excuse me. The workers' compensation audit was conducted on Monday, September 9th. Both audits are going very well. The developments that are, we are current, we're working on last month, the concept plan, site plan for Hampstead Overlook, and the final site plan for Melanie Acres cannot be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval until they receive approval from the county stormwater department. In addition to these plans, the commission previously approved a simplified site plan for the North Carroll Business Park behind Fuchs. It was a grading and stormwater plan that included a gravel driveway entrance and the relocation of the sewer pump station from the front of the property to the back. The area where the stormwater facility was to be located did not pass the drainage test. Therefore, the plan must go back to the county for another approval after this facility was, after the stormwater facility was redesigned. They will need another approval from the commission, since many changes were made to the original site plan. McDonald's, if anybody noticed, just recently renovated the outside and inside of their building and added a second drive-through lane. They are in the process of hiring an additional 15 employees. Grand opening is scheduled for Saturday, this Saturday, September 14th, at 4:00 p.m. The owner has invited representatives from our local North Carroll Recreation Council, Lions Club, our Hampstead Police Department, and Hampstead Fire Department, so he may give donations to all of these organizations. The municipalities and counties are working together for the 2020 census. The Assistant Zoning Administrator attended the third complete committee meeting at the county on Monday, August 26th. Work groups were identified, which were nonprofits, veterans, business, municipal, et cetera, and outreach efforts within said groups were discussed. The county has received grant funding from the state in the amount of $20,000 and has matched it for a total of $40,000. These funds will be utilized for the outreach efforts. The town manager, well, I, excuse me, I attended the annual MDOT pre-tour meeting. The big projects that are part of the state transportation plan are our Main Street revitalization, safety and streetscape improvements of 2.6 miles across Maryland 26 between the Liberty Reservoir and Maryland 32, funding for a planning study to determine potential safety and capacity improvements to Route 32 from Maryland 26 to I-70, which is 7.5 miles, funding for our streetscape design in New Windsor, and other roadway improvements to relieve traffic congestion and improve safety throughout Carroll County.
So, that was the pre-tour meeting. When's the tour?
Uh, next Friday, Friday, 26th.
Thursday? I think it's the Thursday?
Thursday, sometime in September.
26th, I think, something like that.
26th sounds, which I think Councilman Rourke's attending also.
Yeah.
We'll both be there. Rental housing license, the town has received 237 rental housing license renewals. There are 48 overdue renewals, so second notice letters have been mailed out. Just a reminder that all non-exempt rental properties require rental housing license. If anybody has any questions, they should contact town hall.
Okay. Questions for Tammy? Marlene, you're up.
Okay. Farmers market report. We're thrilled with the customer attendance at the market so far this season. After 15 Saturdays in 2018, we recorded 23,660 customers. After 15 Saturdays this season, we've recorded 30,493 customers, an increase of nearly 7,000 customers from last year. I actually had to redo my numbers, because I thought, this can't be right, but I guess it was. Although we can't be certain, we believe that the increase is directly related to increased advertising. Occasionally, customers will ask for a market t-shirt. Well, we didn't want to get into the retail clothing business, so Keith Johnson, one of our volunteers, has worked with Maryland Print House in Manchester to develop a market store, where folks who are interested can purchase t-shirts with the market logo, and several of our vendors have in fact ordered t-shirts and plan to wear them at the market. The Christmas market will again be held at St. John's United Methodist Church on Main Street. The pastors have been extremely gracious in allowing us to use their first and ground floor, ground floors in the past, and we will do so again this year. The Christmas market will be held on Friday, November 22nd, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., which coincides with the town's annual tree lighting ceremony, and the market will continue into Saturday, November 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That's it.
We have to do it early this year, because Thanksgiving's late, and then we wouldn't turn the lights on until December 6th, then it's hardly worth having the lights up, so.
That's okay.
That's why we're doing it early.
Okay with me.
Wayne?
The Hampstead Train Station Committee, our last music in the parks this Saturday, the 14th, we're gonna start early at 5:15, because we have the unveiling of the Hampstead Clock, and so music's gonna start at 5:15 and continue on till 8 o'clock. It's gonna be Hickory Wind.
Which is, what kind of band?
An all kind of good band. Yeah, they play music from the 70s, 80s.
Okay.
They play at the farmer's market probably three, four times this year.
It's a music country.
And that's the band that opened for us this year, farmer's market, so they're closing for us. Food's gonna be provided by St. John's Church, and all the money from the donations for the food go to support their free camp during the summer. We wanna thank our sponsors this year, Fuchs of North America, Carroll County True Value Hardware, Carquest Hampstead Auto Parts, Pipe the Side Brewery, Work in Progress Studios, Hope Properties Incorporated, the town of Hampstead, Family Pharmacy, Farmers and Merchant Bank, and the Hampstead Farmers Market. That's all I have for the train station, the tree commission. We've got a meeting on the 26th, working out the plans for our fall planting, the celebratory tree program seems to be a hit. We have a few trees to put into the park for that, and also I'm gonna be talking to Councilman Ungliffy about some trees over in his area, and I got hit by HOA last night that wants us to plant trees in their HOA this fall, too, if we have trees to spare. So, working on that. That's all I've got.
Good. Jim?
Planning and zoning commission of Hampstead met on Wednesday, August 28th, 2019. First item on the local agenda was a reintroduction of a final site plan for Melanie Acres. It was originally introduced at the July meeting, but we found that afterwards, a certain amount, for certain pieces of that site plan were missing. We now have the complete site plan, and as I stated last month, and as Tammy said earlier tonight, Melanie Acres is still waiting for approval of their stormwater plan from the county, and until they receive that, the final plan's not gonna move anywhere, just gonna be sitting there. And the only other thing on the agenda was the discussion of ordinance 533 regarding small cell sites, and we went over all that in the public hearing, so.
I'm done, that's it. Good. Joe?
Okay, park updates, Panther Park Basketball Court. This project is now complete.
Looks good, too.
With our special piece of equipment in place, Tim Echols and Carol Gorsuch generously donated a memorial bench in the honor of Tim Echols Jr.
Oh.
We are grateful for this donation, and it is a wonderful addition to our park. Thank you, Tim and Carol.
Thank you, guys.
Odin Kemp Park Playground. Our supplier has received the equipment, and installation will begin the week of the 23rd. We are pricing on, we are pricing out the new benches, and are looking into funding opportunities at this time. War Memorial, the grant has been submitted and received by DNR. Awards will be announced in May of 2020. That's it.
All right. Hopefully, we're successful. Dave?
Okay, water concerns. August 2019, average water usage was 361,000 gallons per day. September 2019, average water usage so far was 353,000 gallons per day. Rainfall total August 2019 was 2.0. Rainfall total so far for September 2019 is .5. Just a side note, with the MML, I've been honored to go on the planning committee again this year for the conference in the summer, and I continue, as far as the graveyard project, we're receiving some more rocks this week from Commissioner Weaver's Farm, and we hope to start working on the project at the end of this month.
Okay. Thanks. Chief? Since we're on TV, use the mic. I know.
During August, we issued 115 citations and warnings. We investigated six crashes, two reported on the 482 circle. We conducted 195 patrol tracks. We investigated three DUIs, one theft, one attempted burglary, four assaults, and four commercial burglaries. We took into custody eight adults and three juveniles for offenses that ranged from DUIs, theft, assault, suspended driver, and one individual on an outstanding warrant. Patrolman Vannick completed firearms instructor school, and Lieutenant Egler was recertified as a child passenger safety seat technician. Did I say that correctly? Thank you. With reference to traffic enforcement, you'll notice around town, we've been deploying our speed sign in various places as a result of complaints that we receive. It's helped us sort of address some of the speeding issues and also determine where and when we should be putting our people out there to enforce the various violations. With reference to community policing, we attended the North Carroll Farms and the Hampstead Valley Condo Homeowners Association meetings. We all participated in the annual carnival and the parade, and Lieutenant Egler, with her new certification, installed a car seat for a local citizen.
Any questions for Dave? That's it for this minute. All right. My comments, hard to believe, but we're in September. August was the Hampstead Volunteer Fire Company Carnival. It looked like it went very well again this year. It's always nice with Kevin running the candy wheel, Kevin being our superintendent of public works, but he runs the candy wheel every year for how many years?
Thirty.
Thirty-one. And so, he's now recruited like several of us and town staff to help him out on various nights, and it's always a hoot. Says, I mean, you can, you can walk down to Jiffy Mart and buy a candy bar, a nice-sized candy bar for a buck, and then, you know, but something about winning a candy bar and spending $2 that makes it taste that much better. So, it's a good time, and, you know, just a lot of people walk by that you don't get to see, but maybe that once a year, so, but it was well done. You know, the parade went off without a hitch, the weather, for the exception of one night, worked out well, and I think they actually made a few bucks. I think Wayne mentioned, but we're gonna have a dedication of a, basically, an old-fashioned clock that actually has hands on it, so we'll have, you know, be a learning opportunity maybe for our kids. And there'll be music in the park this Saturday, and the dedication starts at 5:30, so come one, come all. Hopefully, the weather holds and it'll be a very nice night. I have a board meeting with the Maryland Municipal League that Dave mentioned, referred to as the MML, which is a collection of all the cities and towns in Maryland, there's 156 of them, believe it or not, but we have our first board meeting of the year this Saturday in Gaithersburg, so I'll be attending to that, and then I think everybody up here, but Joe has a prior commitment, will be down for the Carroll County MML in Sykesville later this month, where we all get together, and our invited guest is the superintendent of schools for Carroll County, Steve Locker. I thought, you know, it would be a good opportunity for him to come in and give everybody an update on what's going on with the school system, and he heartily accepted, so I'm looking forward to that. Tonight's a celebratory night, but not to bring everybody down, but there's, you know, on the Carroll County MML side, Perry Jones is the mayor of Union Bridge, and he lost his son over the weekend.
Oh.
So, that, you know, was unfortunate. I'll be attending a ceremony tomorrow night in Union Bridge as a result of that, but Perry's, you know, he's a good man, he's actually the president-elect of Carroll County, or not the Carroll County, but the whole Maryland Municipal League, and I think many of you know, if you, you know, hadn't followed in politics at all in Carroll County, he's, he is Union Bridge. I mean, he's been the mayor there for more years than I can remember, served on the county commissioners, and then became the mayor again of Union Bridge, so a good man and obviously a difficult loss. So, that's my report. I don't think there's any unfinished business, so the new business, try to flip it over, go to the positive. We have two new officers, and they're here tonight. We wanted to introduce them to the community, and we thought September, when we have TV, was a good time to do it, but our two Matts, so I'll give you the profiles on them, and then we'll swear them in, and then Chief is gonna recommend, commend, thank you. Commendate not so much, commend, and thank some of our officers for a job well done over the past year. I don't think they get enough airtime or understanding of some of the good deeds that basically go unnoticed in the town, so tonight's a good opportunity to do that. And then, gotta recognize Carolyn Griffin, who I'll get to in a minute as well, for, you know, her 24 years of service to the town. So, we had a nice little luncheon for her earlier today, and we have a little, a couple other mementos that we wanna give her on her way out the door. So, first, to our two Matts, Matt Spencer. Matthew, he grew up in elegant city area, and he graduated from Calvert Hall. I still have several friends who graduated from Calvert Hall back in my days when I went to Loyola College, so, you know, a good high school. He has his bachelor of science in electronic media and film from Towson University. How you get from film to being a cop on the street, that's probably a story that's, you know, worth listening to at some point. He's married to Kylie, who's here, and he's, who's a teacher in Howard County, and currently Sykesville, but on your way to Tawny Town, right, as far as where you're gonna end up living? So, and then Matt Ballman, he's from Manchester, he's our first graduate from Manchester Valley to serve in the police department, a 2013 grad, so he's as old as my youngest, and he's a, he was a political science major, we won't hold that against him, from Norwich University in Vermont, and it's interesting that he's currently a lieutenant in the Pennsylvania National Guard, so, and an Eagle Scout. So, two really well-qualified guys, and happy to have them on board. Chief gave me some of the things that they had to go through, but we basically processed 130 applicants for these two positions. We had 15 interviews, there were background investigations that involved 50 separate interviews, including roommates, coworkers, neighbors, police departments in Pennsylvania, Vermont, Massachusetts, anywhere they laid their head, we had to check it out. So, the police academy, they had to pass 61 individual tests, ranging from law, psychology to first aid. All, of course, they had to pass with flying colors. Both were required to pass a series of skills tests that required subject matter, such as firearms, pursuit, driving, defensive tactics, tactics, and first aid. Both were required to successfully pass a series of increasingly complicated scenarios that were designed to test their knowledge on a subject matter they had been, they had been learning. These scenarios were videotaped, and then they were evaluated on them by their staff and other students. And I can tell you, the chief told me some of the questions they asked him during the interview, which are scenario-based questions, and I wouldn't have, you know, I don't think I'd be a cop at this point based on the scenarios that he was giving me. So, these two can really think on their feet, and, you know, both have their bachelor's degrees. They both passed with the flying colors from the Maryland Training Academy in early August. They're currently in their field training process, they have 320 hours of field training to go through, and we have two officers that are certified as field trainers. They're currently more than halfway into that process. At the completion end of this process, there's another like 63 specific tasks that they have to show they've, have a comfortable grasp on before we release them out on their own. So, the process that they're going through involves weekly, daily, weekly, and monthly reviews. So, in about another month and a half, they're good to go, right? So, and then they're still out, they're still in their probationary year, so, you know, these guys have been, I don't know, you know, basically put through a lot, and they've, and they've excelled and done a very good job, and we're happy to have them on- and we're happy to have them on board. Since they've been here in August, they hit, you know, high season with the carnival, which is, you know, a busy time of year, so they got to meet a lot of people, and then from what I understand from the chief, they've been very busy. Because of, for whatever reason, full moons, something in the water that we don't know about, but there's been a lot for them to deal with. So, you know, take the opportunity to swear them in right now in front of everybody. And their families are here tonight, too, as well. So come on up, gentlemen, and chief. I'm on this side, so you're here with me. You guys have done this before. All right. Right hand. Just hanging out in the back.
I'm hanging out.
All right. I state your name.
I'm Matthew Bachmann.
I'm Matthew Spencer.
Do swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland and support the Constitution and laws thereof.
To the state of Maryland and support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will to the best of my skill and judgment.
And that I will to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of police officer of the Hampstead Police Department.
Execute the office of police officer of the Hampstead Police Department.
According to the constitutional laws of this state.
According to the constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations, welcome onboard. Stacy's taking a picture. You're in the middle. Are we not smiling? All right. Good job. Huh? You're doing it. You're doing it.
Tonight, we wanna take a few minutes and just, now, to some of the work everybody's been doing here for the police department. I am fortunate enough to come to a great place every day, and I include people in Town Hall, Public Works, in that, but especially the people, the men and women of the police department. I really don't like using this thing. I feel like I should be telling jokes or anything like that. So I apologize if I talk a little, a little low. These guys have done a lot of work in the last year, and I am very proud of them, including the two Matts. The mayor talked a little bit about all the work that goes in, to the point where they actually get here, and they're actually wearing the uniform, and they're answering the calls for service. There's a lot of work, a lot of hard sweat, a lot of studying that goes on. I really am, we're very proud of what they've done, you know, and they should be, as tonight, we're acknowledging them for that. But I would also say, and something that I told them in a much smaller ceremony when they graduated, this is just a reminder, this is for everybody that's wearing a uniform in this room, myself included. I remind everybody that the badge that we get, it's not our badge. All right, and some of the people at the council here have heard this before, the mayor's heard this rap. But it's a good reminder, it's not our badge, it's your badge, right, it belongs to the people in town. And we are fortunate enough that you guys have decided to trust us with all the authority that comes with that. And it's our job to make sure we live up to that responsibility. And I say that for everybody, including the guys that have been here for a while, because sometimes it's good to remember where we come from. With that being said, I wanna say a few things before we have some recognition, some commendations that we're gonna give our guys. Some things that the guys have accomplished this year, which I'm very proud of. Dan Vannick's in the back of the room, he's gonna come up here in a second. He's squirming right now because he's very uncomfortable when I talk about him and puff him. He's accomplished a lot this year. First thing he accomplished is, he attended and successfully passed what's called armor school. Essentially, we have a series of firearms that the police department has. We need somebody that knows how to repair them and maintain them. He went to school to learn how to do that, so we can do that in-house. He also successfully passed FTO school. The mayor talked about the FTO process, a lot goes into that. We had to develop a field training program that was approved by the state. Now, every one of the guys that you're gonna see tonight, and I'm gonna talk about it a little bit, they participated in this. A lot of work went into that, and ultimately, the state approved our training process that we have here. And that leads us to our new people here, and we're able to properly train them. Dan also went through what's called instructor school. He's now certified as a, an instructor in various aspects of policing. He was basically taught how to be a teacher, all right, for other police officers by the state. And he just completed, as I mentioned earlier in the report, firearms instructor school within the last couple weeks. So he is now able to basically give us the appropriate training we need. It's something that we can do in-house, as opposed to looking for someone else to provide that service for us. Rob Orm's also in the back, he is another graduate of FTO school. He's also our current defensive tactics instructor, he's been through school for that. He's certified in teaching us the latest techniques and everything we need to do to keep our people safe. He just graduated from TASER instructor school, it's another tool we use on a regular basis, I shouldn't say on a regular basis, it's a tool we carry on a regular basis. We don't have to use it, all right, but we need somebody to show us how to use it properly and make sure that we're properly certified. He accomplished something that not a lot of police officers get a chance to do. He actually graduated from hostage negotiation school this year. He's currently one of the team members of the county's crisis negotiation team. So when there is a serious incident, whether it's a barricade or a hostage-type situation, Rob is on the, the list. He gets called out to help wherever they need him, and he is very good at what he does, and we're very proud to have him here, and we're very proud to be able to loan him to our colleagues in law enforcement in the county when, when they need a little help. John Cranshaw is in the back as well. He also graduated from FTO school, and I mentioned earlier in one of the monthly reports, he received his designation this year as a drug recognition expert, a DRE. Now, the DRE school, it's, it's a, it is a difficult school. To put it in perspective, there's only one score that passes in DRE school, it's 100%. And I always get a kick out of that because if you get a 75% in med school, they still call you a doctor. But if you don't get 100% in DRE school, then you get a handshake and you're asked to come back a different time. To put it, it, basically, it gives us an additional capacity to recognize impaired drivers that may not just be under the influence of alcohol. And more and more of the stuff that we deal with now involves people that are under the influence of some type of controlled substance. I don't wanna use the wrong number, but how many DRAs do we have in the county? Okay, Jonathan's one of three people that has this designation in the county, so this is another. Not only do we use it here, but some of our colleagues, when they need the assistance, we provide that service for them as well. I will tell you a quick story, which I probably shouldn't in front of the mayor, but I can't help myself. We did have one afternoon, and it was myself working, it was Jonathan working, and it was Rob working. And at some point in time, I found myself here alone because the state police in Westminster had a problem that only a DRE could solve. If I remember, I might be using the wrong police department. In Baltimore County, had a hostage situation, and they asked for help from Rob. So, very proud of what these guys have accomplished and what they do. And I just wanted to share that with everybody out here. But if we could switch gears here, one of the things we do in policing, when we recognize, we, we try to recognize things that were out of the ordinary that took place in the course of a year, and we do it with commendations. You know, essentially, it is a, a piece of paper that will explain what took place. I'm gonna talk about it a little bit, and eventually, these guys will be given a little ribbon that will recognize what they did to get them this particular commendation. Dan, why don't you come up here? And as I said before, Daniel really loves crowds, and he loves, he loves being out in front of everybody. In September of this year, we were notified of a house that was essentially selling heroin out of it. We had a series of complaints from neighbors, we were running into some frustration on how to deal with it, how to address it. Daniel and Officer Fogel, who was with us at the time, were both given the assignment to follow it up. They went out, they established a surveillance essentially on the house. Ultimately, they led, it led to a car stop. Car stop was late at night. During the course of the car stop, they recovered a quantity of controlled substances, they required, or they recovered a loaded 22 caliber handgun. And from that, they were able to get a search warrant, they got us in the house, it recovered us, recovered more contraband. One of the things that they actually were able to lead us to is, we discovered that we also had somebody that was living in the residence who had a connection to a large city in Maryland, where some of this stuff was being sourced from. So they were, essentially, we were able to shut down a drug operation in a, in a neighborhood. And as a result, we're gonna issue Dan a commendation of merit for great police work. Have a seat right there, I'll go in the back.
He follows orders.
Jonathan, come on up. I mentioned a few minutes ago Jonathan's extra training. It's out of the ordinary. Took a lot of work. On May 8th of this year, and this is a particular stop that I actually had the, the opportunity to back Jonathan up on. There was a suspected drunk driver that was coming down Main Street. Car had a lot of dents in it, essentially, he gets pulled over, and all the indications are consistent with somebody that was impaired. Somebody was impaired with usually drugs. Person couldn't, couldn't answer questions straight, they couldn't perform field sobriety tests. A lot, a less experienced officer would have seen this as a, a run-of-the-mill DUI. Probably would have taken him to central booking, who knows what takes place. Jonathan has additional training, as I mentioned, and a lot of what he does is based on physiological observations. He sees things in the body, the way people behave, the way their eyes are, the way they breathe, the way they act. And he noticed if something was out of the ordinary. And rather than handle it as a, a run-of-the-mill DUI, he knew that there was something else going on here, and he called for an ambulance. Guy swore up and down that, that he didn't need any help, he was okay. At the end of the day, the gentleman was ultimately at the hospital, and it was discovered that he actually had a medical emergency. And had he not interacted with Officer Cranshaw that day, there's a good possibility he would not be here today. He had a medical condition, he ultimately ended up in a trauma center, and essentially, as crazy as it sounds, that, that car stop is what, you know, saved his life. So with that being said, I'd like to present Jonathan with a commendation of merit for great police work. Last one. And this kind of accomplishes everybody. Friday, March 29th, 9:55 in the morning, we had a call on Main Street, Rob Orm did. There was a gentleman that was in distress, he was having a problem at home. Things had deteriorated to the point where they had taken a firearm, they were threatening their own life, people in the house. Rob answered the call. Come on up, Rob. Good suggestion. Eventually, everybody's gonna end up here on this. Rob had a lot that he had to deal with at that point in time. He had essentially what we call a barricade, he had to worry about getting people out of there safely, he had to worry about containing the situation, he had to worry about calling for additional resources. He had a lot, he was struggling a lot of things at once. With that, at that particular time, Officer Vannick and Officer Cranshaw are off-duty. They're in court, and they happen to hear what's going on. No obligation, but the two of them leave court and respond to town. Jonathan and Dan are able to start setting up a perimeter while Rob calls for additional assets to come in. Ultimately, the sheriff's department, as well as several other law enforcement agencies, show here, or show up here, were able to, after several hours, resolve the circumstances. However, during that time, I'm gonna ask Ms. Carolyn to come up here as well. Because, don't roll your eyes at me. One of the things that happens is, at this point in time, we have a group of people that are witnesses, we have people that are victims, we have relatively cold conditions, so without warning, we bring everyone into the police department. And Ms. Carolyn is now responsible for not only taking care of these people that have nowhere to go, but she's also our person that's coordinating so many different things that are happening. How she did it in the course of one day, I don't know, she made it look easy, she didn't break a sweat. All right. Essentially, you had a team here that functioned that I was incredibly proud of. At the end of the afternoon, gentleman decides that he has had enough, he comes out, he decides he's gonna leave. But one of the things we're never able to find is the firearm. There's a handgun that's missing. Later on that evening, Rob goes back, interviews the guy. These guys on the scene go back, we go back to a house, and we're able to find a firearm that other law enforcement agencies weren't necessarily, necessarily able to find. And it's my contention that by us finding that and securing it, we also prevented additional stuff in, from happening in the future. There's a lot of things these guys did in the course of the day, coming from a larger agency where we were able to summon a lot more resources. I was completely amazed by the way these guys made it look easy. So with that being said, I would like to acknowledge everybody that's up here, all right, with a unit citation, Ms. Carolyn, Jonathan, Daniel, and Rob, for the actions they took on Friday, March 29th, in safely resolving a barricaded situation. Jonathan, thank you.
What are these, yours?
Mayor, you need to have a closer.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Now, we gotta open them? Try, do your best to smile.
Open them up for the picture.
Smile, Dan. Smile, Dan. Good job, guys. All right.
Thank you.
You stop Carolyn before she sits down. Carolyn?
Don't go too far.
Wrong one. Hopefully, I got it. Here it is.
Okay, good.
This was all well-deserved. Chief's been around for now 13 months, he started in August last year. I will say that what he's done with the police department, with the training he's gotten, all our officers, with the recognition of bringing the two Matts on, plus the two people we're currently putting through the hiring process, I think everybody up here is very comfortable with the direction the police department's hand, is headed, plus the, the service we get and the bang-for-the-buck we get with the people who serve our town. And you can see that there's a lot of instances where they go above and beyond the call, and those are just a couple because he sits in my office once a week and gives me an update, and it's, you know, it's just, every time, he, some, you know, some things are more surprising than others, but there's just a lot of things that go on in this town, and there's a lot of things that go into making it one of the safest places to live and raise kids. And these people have a lot to do with it. So, one of Ms. Carolyn here, who I affectionately refer to as employee number one, because in July 5th of 1995, if I have that right, so I'm a mayor of less than two months, and, and we hire Carolyn. And back then, I actually had something to do with hiring people, they let me interview them, and, you know, actually say, you know, that's a, you know, that's a person we should go after. So that, you know, there's a little bit less of that these days. But she came on board, so I think she's the second-longest-tenured employee other than Kevin here. And so, we're really, you know, with your retirement after 24 years, really gonna miss you. I told her today that, you know, with her, her southern charm, you know, there are people who just called it, and you're just getting mesmerized by that accent. It's, it was always professional, always, you know, at least when she was chatting with me, always upbeat, you know, always, what can you do for you? And the people she dealt with, you know, in good times and in bad, they always went away feeling better because they had an interaction with Carolyn, and, and that's gonna be missed. The other piece of it, Chief and I were talking, that's gonna be missed, is we've gotten a lot of grants over the years. And this lady is a very proficient writer, apparently, because of that. And it goes back to when we first got some of our first police
And, uh, it goes back to when we first got some of our first police officers through police officer grants, Stacy and Clint, to name two, I think, um, where a portion of it got paid by the state and we assumed the full responsibility of the salary and benefits as the years went on. But not only that she, was she a good writer, but then she's a very good, you know, at building relationships with the people that had to read those, um, grants. And so as a result, I, that had a lot to do with us winning more than our fair share. So, we have a proclamation and maybe one other thing back there. So as well as Carolyn Griffin served with distinction as an employee of the town of Hampstead for 24 years from July of 1995 to August of 2019, whereas for five years at Town Hall and 19 years at the Police Department, Carolyn consistently exhibited dedicated service and the highest quality work standards, whether dealing with the routine task of town administration or assisting with emergency response. And whereas Carolyn served as the first point of contact for people seeking help during an emergency, reporting irregular or unusual activity, and those with general questions, while treating everyone with compassion, understanding and professionalism. Whereas Carolyn's skill in procuring grant funding for the department ensured availability of police resources that will continue to serve the citizens of Hampstead for many years to come. And whereas her administrative function in the Police Department played an important role in keeping our community safe, leading to the recognition of the town of Hampstead as one of the safest communities in which to live. Whereas through her selfless dedication, Carolyn has been a positive reflection on our town, thereby earning our respect and admiration for a job well-done. And now therefore, I, Christopher Nevin, Mayor of the town of Hampstead, wish our friend Carolyn all the best in her retirement and future endeavors and hereby proclaim today, September 5th, as Carolyn Griffin Day in the town of Hampstead.
And you gotta, you know, you're around for 24 years, you get more than a proclamation.
Okay. All right, good. Oh, that's pretty.
So, Distinguished Service Award with the town key to Carolyn Griffin and, you know, has the day's date on it and all the other good stuff, so take a picture for Stacy. Chief, come here. Smile.
Sure.
Kevin.
Thanks.
Thank you again.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Congratulations, Kevin.
Always good to be able to recognize people and, and, uh, we do have a lot of people that do really good work for the town of Hampstead. So, um, more mundane stuff, we have an amendment to August 13th, 2019, budget revision for the BG&E retrofit program that we talked about last month. I think you guys all see the budget revisions, not that significant, but over time, this will save the town money with, uh, the modernization of the, of the lights that we're gonna do. So we're gonna transfer $9,765 to the reserve, to the three accounts referenced in the general fund, and we're gonna transfer $3,146 from, from the reserve to the two accounts referenced in the water fund.
So move.
Is there a second? Second, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? No other new business that I'm aware of? Adoption of ordinance 533, we know we're not gonna adopt it.
Well, first, we have to make a motion to adopt.
First, no adopt.
Second.
All right. Now.
I make a motion to amend ordinance 533 with the draft that was presented to the council, which has the updates and changes suggested from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second.
Any discussion on those changes in that draft? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now, you're gonna refer it back.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion, send the amended ordinance back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review. Second.
Any discussion of that? All those in favor of referring back?
Make a modification. Uh, change it to table the ordinance and amend it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Make a motion to table the ordinance, ordinance and send it back to the. It was the second.
Joe was the second, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Parliamentary procedure. All right. Anything else up here? Public comments? Once, twice, three times? No, not tonight, okay, we're good.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you all for coming out, really appreciate it.
Sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thought.